Good evening. Today is Monday, April 6, 2020. We're here for, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It is 7:34. The vast majority of us are, or of the elected officials, are dialing in remotely, which is allowed to achieve a quorum by the governor's executive order. I would ask that you at least rise in your head and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I.
And to the republic.
Republic.
Which stands one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna get started. We're gonna try to do things as normal as possible. I am going to ask Clerk Tamer. Okay, so, but before I get started, so I'm here at City Hall on the dais along with City Manager Jim Grabowski, Clerk Tamer, and Alderman Mark Mulliner are here with me. We are all sufficiently socially distanced. And we have, I see Elaine Leibowitz, our treasurer, on, and then we also have, it looks like, and we're gonna call roll in a second, looks like we have thirteen Aldermen. Clerk Tamer, and I say you call the roll. You're gonna have to unmute when you answer, Alderman.
Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Doiter.
Here.
Tino.
Here.
Luter.
Yep.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palomski.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park. Alderman Park.
I'm here.
Levin. Levin. Alderman Levin. Can you unmute and say here? You muted?
I can unmute you, Scott.
Is the wave not for doing? Okay. We have a visual that he's here. Is that okay?
I think we'll probably have Mike Stenson calling. But you got a thumbs up if you're here, right? Might have to hold a yee and a nay sign up, Scott. Okay. Hold on, unmuted. Unmuted. Let me go. Okay, Scott, we're gonna probably have Mike Stenson call you, but we're gonna continue the meeting. We certainly have a quorum.
Let me, uh...
Finish the roll. Okay, we're gonna finish the roll.
Levin. Oh, sorry. Kennedy.
Here.
Conquest.
Here.
Thirteen present and one absent.
Okay, thirteen present, one absent, one without audio. But maybe Mike Stenson can call him on his cellphone. Mike Cop, can you have Mike Stenson call Alderman Levin, see if we can, we certainly have a quorum, but we'd like to get that figured out sooner than later. Okay, as I said, we're gonna try to do the meeting as normal as possible. I don't believe, City Hall is actually open. We did issue a press release letting people know that City Hall itself would be open. We did sanitize and clean. There is a clear path up to council chambers and/or in Conference Room Two and Three. We have, it's set up for people that can, if they wanna watch, or if they want to public comment. So with that having been said, I don't see anyone in the audience who would be submitting written communications. I'm not sure if Tom Trizine can hear me. Tom, is there anybody in the other room there that wishes to submit any written communication?
No, Mayor. No, no one present in Two and Three.
Okay, and then I guess that goes regarding public forum. Nobody in Two or Three either?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So that's gonna conclude, receive written communications and public forum. I will note that was, we posted online, and certainly encouraging people, if they want to participate, they can submit written communication. I know we did get some written communication, which will be distributed to the Alderman. Okay, onto Agenda Item Four, 4.1 announcements. Any announcements from the group? If you have, raise your hand. Does everyone know how to raise their hand? There's a little raise your hand, but raise your hand button right next to your name if you need to. I'd like to stick with that instead of having to do roll call every time I ask a question. So is there anybody who has any announcements from the dais? Okay, I don't see anybody raising the hand. If not, we're gonna move on to consent agenda. Agenda Item Five. At this time, is there anybody who wishes to have anything, any item pulled from the consent agenda to vote no or provide further comment? I can hear Scott Levin through Mike Cop's phone. Alderman Bram, you wanna pull something?
5.7.
5.7, okay. What else? Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, anybody else besides Alderman Bram? I've got 5.7. Anyone else? Just confirming with City Manager, no one else has raised their hand? Okay, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 5.7. Raise your hand visually, I think I can see you. Mike Brennan and Mike Conquest, we got a motion by Mike Conquest, second by Mike Brennan. Is that what we've got recorded? Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 5.7. Motion by Mike Conquest, second by Mike Brennan. Clerk Tamer.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner. Doiter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Luter, absent. Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
I think that was me, aye.
Palomski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
He says thumbs up, aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hey, Mike Cop, can we call Scott Levin on your cellphone and put it right here? Let's do that, let's see if Scott has a cellphone he can use. Oh. But I'll mute him if we can do that, if we can get him pulled up with, either one, I don't care who we call him on.
Alderman Conquest for the last one.
Aye.
Thank you.
Scott, we're calling you on your cellphone. Hey, Scott, can you hear me?
I got you.
Okay. All right, I will mute you unless we need to talk to you. All right, all right, I think we got a patch working. Ooh, that's horrible. All right, I'll put that over there. Okay, consent agenda is, yes?
Yes, thirteen present, sorry, thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus Agenda Item 5.7 is an ordinance. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for a planned unit development with site development allowances for the development, construction, and operation of an industrial building at the property commonly known as 941-961 North Weagle Drive, Elmhurst, Illinois.
Okay, put this in mode, put this before town call and ask for approval. The ordinance as read was my Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Conquest. Discussion. Even though I can't see on my screen, Alderman Bram, you pulled this, I'm gonna ask you to be able to first.
Can't hear you, Mayor.
Alderman Bram, you're up.
No, that was me. I didn't mute. I'm gonna ask Alderman Bram to jump in. He pulled this. Alderman Bram, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. I'll try to speak loud so everybody can hear me. Yeah, I understand PUD and the conditional uses. Essentially, I'll keep this short. I just think that the requests are too significant. One example is the five feet requirement for a sign, and the conditional use is twelve feet, so therefore I will not be supporting it.
Okay. Anyone else? Either wave or raise your hand electronically. City Manager? Seeing none, I will now call the vote on Agenda Item 5.7.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Luter. One absent. Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Alderman Levin in the second. Great, thank you. Kennedy.
Aye.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Sorry, I was muted. Twelve ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda Item 5.7 is approved. On to Agenda Item 6.1. This is a committee report out of finance. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council ratify the executive order signed by Mayor Morley on March 31, 2020, by approving the suspension of the rules to approve this committee report and the attached resolution during the same meeting. The report recommends approving the resolution exempting emergency responders from the FMLA expansion provisions of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, and from qualifying, and from qualifying reason number five of the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act that is in effect through December 31, 2020. Signed Noel Toledo, Chair Kevin York, Vice Chair Alderman Michael J. Bram, and Alderwoman Tina Park.
Okay, to support counsel, ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman York. Alderman Toledo, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a report from the Finance Committee recommending the exclusion of certain emergency responders of the city of Elmhurst from certain provisions of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. We'll call it FF-CRA. As we all know, we're currently, as a community, country, and world, battling the COVID-19 pandemic. This unprecedented situation calls for us all to take steps that are both exceptional and contrary to our desire for independence. This agenda item addresses an exceptional situation where we, as a local government, are balancing the need to continue to provide critical city services such as police, fire, and wastewater treatment to the residents who live in this community, while at the same time working to protect and provide assistance to those emergency city employees who are being asked to continue to do this emergency work. I'm confident that we can do both. The Finance Committee discussed this topic at length last Tuesday. A couple key points that were brought up during our discussion that I'd like to make note of. First off, we wanted to thank all of our first responders and city employees. Police, fire, Public Works, and all employees have been doing an amazing job during these unusual times. Second, the recommendation is focused on providing the city the opportunity to schedule employees in a way that continues service to the residents of Elmhurst, like police protection and wastewater treatment. Third, all city employees, including emergency responders, can use the provisions in the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act to receive paid leave if they or a family member have COVID-19, they have symptoms, or they've been ordered to quarantine due to the virus. This is important to protect them, their coworkers, and our community. Fourth, the only exclusion we are recommending is when an employee can't work due to lack of childcare. In these situations, the city will work with each employee and their supervisor on a case-by-case basis to help through scheduling options, shift changes, helping to find alternate childcare, and any other means available. This action was necessary to take prior to April 1, when the act took effect. At our special meeting of the Finance Committee on March 31, the committee took two votes. The first recommended the mayor sign an executive order to the effect described above. He did so on March 31 after the committee meeting. The second vote recommended issuing the report you have in front of you tonight, which supported the signing of the executive order, and then recommended your support on the resolution excluding Elmhurst's emergency responders from the parts of the FF-CRA as described, thereby allowing the city flexibility to continue scheduling emergency responders as necessary to keep services up and running in our community. Thank you, and I ask for your support, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions, please? You can raise your hand electronically or try to do it visually. I'll try to recognize you. Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Chairman Toledo did a great job of explaining it. Just wanted to clarify that this does include the Public Works employees. Also, she mentioned it early, but not in her closing, so it's important to recognize that. And I too recognize the, all the work that every city employee's been doing during this trying time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else wanna raise their hand? Alderman Dunn, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. My question is, the personnel that we're excluding from the recent act are frontline employees, and they're, they're all union employees. Is there anything in terms of the union contract or our relationship with union employees that is significant in passing this resolution?
I'm gonna ask the City Manager to jump in on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. In this situation, with the emergency declaration that the mayor signed initially, we have clauses in our bargaining contracts that allow for times like this. We did reach out to all of the union, either presidents locally or the, in the case of Public Works, we talked to the one, local 150. They understand what we're doing, and they said, I guess, they would not, they would neither support it nor object to it.
Thank you. Thank you for that, City Manager Grabowski. And I would also add to that, for the Alderman, that both the police chief and the fire chief were involved in the discussions and also supported it, as well as the Director of Public Works.
Any other questions? Any comments or questions? Jim? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask Clerk, seeing none, I'm gonna ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Doiter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Luter, absent. Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palomski.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquest.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda Item 6.1 is approved. Just to add a little texture to it, having this in place before April 1 was a recommendation by our attorney. So the Finance Committee was meeting about insurance, among other things. This would've gone to their committee anyway, so they debated that night. So I know, I knew at the end of that meeting that at least for Aldermen, I knew what their opinion was, and they supported what I was gonna do, and it was obviously in their report. I did sign an executive order to put this in effect before April 1, which was critical, again, according to our attorneys. As was mentioned, I also talked to Police and Fire Chief and Howard Killian, and all were supportive of it. I think the best way to describe this is really not taking away any benefits that were in this act. In fact, the act was written with this specific inclusion in it that allows us to do it. I would say we're excluding a very narrow sliver of this act, and really what we're doing is we're addressing a problem locally that was addressed in the act from a federal level. So their way to address the act was one way. We've taken that part out of the act, and we will address with, we will address any scheduling issues locally. I also had a conversation, well, numerous conversations, but the final conversation I had with the City Manager is I will, I have no problem issuing this executive order if he would commit to work with any person covered by this that has some daycare issues. And he certainly said that we will work with any employee that has an issue. Alderman Toledo?
No, that was a hand raised from earlier during the report discussion. I think it has to be cleared.
I think you push it again, and it goes off.
Oh, do I?
Yeah.
That the host...
Either that, or you're the kid in the back of the math class with your hand up the whole time. Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Can't hear you, Mayor. Steve, now you're muted.
Yeah, now I'm, Alderman Toledo threw me off. Reports and recommendations, 7.1, Mayor Morley. I'd like to take a moment to address the community on the updates regarding COVID-19. By now, we all know, the state stay-at-home order has been extended through April 30. The city of Elmhurst's top priority is the health, safety, and welfare of our community, and we've been closely monitoring the impact of the virus and have acted quickly in taking preventative measures to combat the spread of this virus. At the time, there are 31 confirmed cases in Elmhurst. I wanna take an opportunity to make sure, the best thing we can do, one of the best things we can do in a time like this is make sure people have accurate information. So last week, DuPage, and this was in one of our press releases, last week, DuPage County started a dashboard where you can go and get a snapshot of all things COVID-19 in DuPage County. So if you just on your browser go to, type in DuPage County COVID-19 dashboard, a link will pop up, and you can see all the different cases from all the different municipalities. There's additional information, more layers, like age, among other things. So it's very good. I know that I've been fielding a lot of calls, who has it, how many people have it, and obviously, it's very sensitive information. In fact, if you're a healthcare provider and you identify someone who has it, you actually have to go to IDPH first, and then IDPH gives that information to the county, and then the county feeds it back to us. So it's kind of a long loop. But if Aldermen and/or residents are interested in daily updates, they can go to DuPage County COVID-19 dashboard and get it there. Also, I've been asked this question, and it's important, all of our first responders are wearing personal protection equipment, and the data that we're getting from the state and from IDPH is tied into our DuCom. So we're supposed to have a highlight or a heads up when our first responders are going to a certain location if that person has tested positive. But we're treating every call as if they do, just to make sure we don't run into any trouble. We are continuing to work with our state, federal, and local representatives. Both myself and City Manager are on conference calls two to three times a day, whether it's with the Governor, Mayor Lightfoot, Chairman Cronin, other COGS like DMMC and IML are constantly giving us updates. We're doing that on a, on a daily basis. I'm very proud of our community, the way we've come together to support each other during these challenging times, and I see examples of this every day. I believe council's aware. Timothy Christian Schools has reached an agreement with Elmhurst Healthcare. If they have an overflow and need to provide emergency daycare for those families, they will be able to do that at Timothy Christian. Timothy Christian is also producing masks. They have what I'll call a Makery or a tech department where they're able to create masks. Elmhurst College is providing rooms to Elmhurst Hospital staff, so if there's any staff members who are on call but don't wanna go back home necessarily, they're able to coordinate with Elmhurst College. Elmhurst Library is making masks with their 3D printers. The parks are doing their best to keep parks open. I think it's important to keep parks open, as we all go a little stir-crazy at home, but they have taped off, both the parks and schools have taped off their playgrounds and have signage up, but you're allowed to still walk through the parks and access them that way. I'm certainly very proud of our residents who continue to search for ways to help their fellow neighbors. There's many ways to volunteer. I mentioned dissemination of information is critical during this time. We have an entire page on our elmhurst.org website dedicated to this, and you can find out, there's numerous places to, to volunteer. Just a quick list, Elmhurst Hospital, their website has a whole list of things that they need and they can use help with, and ways you can volunteer with them. We're also directing people to the Giving DuPage website. Not only do they have places where you can sign up for delivering meals on wheels to seniors, but they have what they call virtual volunteering. So you can volunteer just with your phone. So I'd encourage you to go online and look at that. I would also ask you to continue the best you can to support your hometown businesses. It's, I know it's all difficult for us to stay at home. Imagine trying to running a business during this time. So we have a list of restaurants on our website. I would encourage every, all residents to shop local as much as they can. There's also retailers that have now gone completely remote and are taking orders either online or on the phone and doing remote delivery. So please patronize those folks. Obviously, oh, and the other thing is, Aaron J. Aaron Jason, who works on our development team here, has been doing a fantastic job of keeping our local businesses informed of all the SBA opportunities there are to help people through these tough times. Too many to list, but the, there are links on our website. But if you have specific questions in your local business, please call Aaron Jason here at the city. I know that all of our lives have continued to change over a very short amount of time, and I'm asking all of us to continue to follow the health guidelines that the experts are telling us. I will say this, I had an opportunity to speak to Pam Dunleavy. She's the president over at Elmhurst Hospital. And she re, first thing she asked me when I got on the phone with her was, "Mayor, are you wearing a mask?" I know it took a little while for the federal government to come around, but now the CDC, among others, is saying that any mask, even a homemade cotton mask, is better than nothing at all. So I encourage all residents, if you find yourself in a situation, whether you have to go shopping to get food or other necessary trips, do your best to cover your face. The CDC actually has a link on its website of how to make a homemade mask. And leading by example, every single person at Elmhurst Hospital, whether they're part of the medical staff or they're part of the admin staff, every single person over there is wearing a face mask, and I think that's a good practice. Continue to avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Continue to clean and disinfect your surfaces. The CDC also has a link of how to properly disinfect not only your house, but if someone in your house is infected, how to disinfect with someone in the house. If you are sick, you could cer, you should certainly call your doctor to find out next steps. But Elmhurst Hospital also has interactive links on their website. They have an online bot that you can interact with to see if you need to get tested. You can call your doctor. They have a phone number to nurse triage. They can work you through all of this. They also have video visits and e-visits, and they have testing. You have to qualify, though. You have to meet certain criteria to test. It's out in Warrenville, but the folks at the hospital can certainly direct you to that. I would continue to reiterate, if you haven't signed up for our alerts, we're doing, we were doing press releases about two or three a day. Now they're about one a day. But I would ask that if you want to know what's going on in town, come to our website or sign up for our e-alerts. And I'm just so thankful for all of the residents who continue to reach out and try to find ways to help. Real quick, I want to single out Paul and Colleen Kelty. They own the UPS store here, just across the street from City Hall. They came up with an idea of printing up signs, which they donated to have local folks show Elmhurst Hospital and all the healthcare workers how much we appreciate them. So you see those signs popping up around town. They went in a split second. Then Rich Reichert and Community Bank of Elmhurst stepped in. They produced additional signs, and those are already gone. I would encourage you to, as a way of showing support, you can contact Susan Taberski at Elmhurst Hospital, and she will walk you through how you can get a sign and show support for those healthcare workers and what they're doing. I did ask Pam Dunleavy if there's anything else that we can do besides what's listed on her website. And she said, "You have no idea how much it means to them when they get letters and phone calls and folks showing their support." People are showing up, playing music when they come in. There's people are donating flowers. So they at least walk by the flowers when they come in. So any show of support that we can show, not only our first responders and all those medical people, but anybody who's involved in keeping our city running during this difficult time would be much appreciated. And finally, a big thank you to city staff, first responders, healthcare providers, and everybody who's been affected by this. We appreciate that they continue to do their jobs under these difficult times. And that's it for me, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to bring up. So we, as a staff, are trying to keep life as regular as possible to the extent that we can for the residents. Part of that is our yard waste program. When this initially hit, we had some discussions with our hauler, who was having concerns over staffing levels and volume. They expect volume to go up significantly in the neighborhood, 30% on the residential side. But they also know that on the commercial side, unfortunately, that's going to be down right now. So we've worked with them to make sure that yard, that refuse and recycling continues on as it should, and that will happen. Their next concern was yard waste. As you know, that started in the beginning of the month. At first, there was some confusion as to whether that was going to happen or not. We did work with Republic to make sure that that started on time, and so they are collecting yard waste now. One thing that they asked if we could hold off on is the bulk item pickup, which we agreed to. And the reason that we agreed to that is because spring cleanup is coming. And that we did have some discussions over postponing the spring cleanup. We voiced our concern over that, that a lot of people are ready for that and need to move forward with that. And so spring cleanup will happen on the scheduled dates that it was originally scheduled for. And so that is April 25th, May 2nd, and May 9th. And residents can check the website to check exactly where that will happen as far as it coordinates with what day your regular garbage service is on. Another area that we are focused on in all of this are the finances. Clearly, that's a concern now, as it will be for the remainder of the budget year and even into the 2021 budget. The Finance Committee had a brief overview from Director Trozine, more of the 10,000, maybe even a 30,000-foot view as far as what we're looking into and how we're looking into it. So that discussion will continue at the Finance Committee because that is of critical importance for us at the city. We expect sales tax to be down significantly. Income tax could be down. We're not sure what's going to happen with property taxes as far as collections on the county side. So we are concerned about all of our revenue sources, quite frankly. The last item that I have is something that the mayor mentioned and Alderman Toledo mentioned as well, and so did Alderman York, and that's our employees. They are just amazing in all of this. And I think all the aldermen know, as I've talked to you, that we have separated our crews as much as possible. And we, okay, thank you. We have separated our crews to different locations to make sure that if any one employee gets sick, that they wouldn't infect an entire crew. We've gone to different shifts at the wastewater treatment plant to separate those employees. And fire and police are already separated as far as shifts and locations go. But we have done things like dispelled with, in one roll call, in one room. Now officers are getting their daily directives while they're in their squad cars to, again, try to minimize the contact that they have with each other. I am happy to report, I talked to Chief Ruth today, that the employee who was, came down with COVID is doing very well, and they are due back to work in the next few days with doctor's approval. So that is wonderful. And the five employees that, the five other employees that that employee came in contact with, we had all five of them tested. Four of them came back negative. We're waiting on the result of the fifth one, but none of them are showing any symptoms. So we're very fortunate in that respect. I can't thank our employees enough for coming in every day as they are. Some are working from home, some are working here, and it's going very well. But business is continuing at the city of Elmhurst, and that's important to us to do because we play a critical role in a lot of what other people do as far as construction and house sales and those type of things. So we are pleased to be able to do that to the extent that we can. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, are you muted?
Okay. All right. Any other reports or recommendations from elected officials? Anybody raising their hand?
Mr. Kennedy?
Alderman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know it's been a tough time.
Oh, Jimmy, you're muted. Oh, I can't hear him.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me now?
He's talking. Can't hear you.
Nope, I can't hear him.
Alderman Kennedy, can you try again?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
I can't hear.
I can't hear him.
I can hear you, Jim.
Well, that's good to know, Mike.
I can hear you too, Jim.
I just don't want you to be alone out there.
Well, thank you very much.
Can you hear other people?
I can't hear anybody.
Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear Jim.
Try again.
All right. Steve, can you hear me?
Can you hear?
Yeah, I can hear you from the speaker here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I just wanted to say was, obviously, it's a very tough time for not only our community, our country, and our whole planet. And a lot of people have come together, and you guys just highlighted that. I wanted to say thank you from myself and the fellow aldermen of everything that you've done over these last three weeks to help the residents of Elmhurst, to help city staff through this process. And just wanted to, once again, say thank, thank you for everything you've done and are doing to help our town through this really tough time. So much appreciated, Steve. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. It really is, it really is a team effort. Can you hear me? Okay. It really is a team effort. I mean, and this, this council meeting is a good example. We're doing a lot of stuff that's new for the very first time, and we're not going to get it always right the first time, but we're going to continue to try. But I appreciate that. Thank you, Alderman Kennedy. Anyone else? Okay, seeing nobody, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 8. This is a resolution. I'd ask Clerk Tamer to read the resolution.
A resolution ratifying Executive Order 2020-2 and approving the exclusion of emergency responders of the city of Elmhurst from certain provisions of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance, a resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Kevin York. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. I think this is just a follow-up. We all know it's what we talked about earlier. Seeing no hands raised, we have, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call a vote.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Doiter? Alderman Doiter?
Aye.
Sabatino?
Aye.
Leader absent. Dunn?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy? Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Aye.
Hanquist, I did.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Agenda item 8.1 is approved. Onto Agenda Item 9. Any other business? Anyone? City manager? Alderman York?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to second Alderman Kennedy's motion. I'd like to thank you, city manager, and everybody for your outstanding leadership during this very difficult time. I also wanted to just assure everybody on the dais, around the dais, and residents who may be listening to, that, you know, this is a very difficult time as the mayor, as the city manager alluded to financially. And we're going to see that fall out for quite some while. But I did want to, you know, to spring up the fact that this is a lot different than 2008 and 2009 as far as the city is concerned. We have amazing fund balances. We had virtually nothing in those times. So we are standing by, ready to work with city staff to navigate our way out of this situation. But we're in a good place going into it. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else for other business? Seeing none, we'll entertain. Alderman Toledo. Alderman Toledo, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I just wanted to, really for the benefit of the aldermen and the public, I assume that the intention would be to have the next city council meeting two weeks from now in the same manner that we're having it tonight. Is that the current assumption? Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure there's going to be some improvements we will make. But yes, we're going to have it as regular as possible. So two weeks from today is correct. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Hanquist. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that sounds unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe. We'll see you later.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.